Our first proclamation in recognition of National Economic Development Week. Ms. Bailey, ninth through the fifteenth, are you coming up to speak on this one? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. No, I do not have any speaking quotes to provide besides the proclamation, which pretty outlines a robust support by this city regarding economic development and the recognition of the 92nd anniversary from the National Economic Development Association.
Okay, I don't have the proclamation on my. I don't have the proclamation here. Unless you have it. Oh, okay. All right, so this is a proclamation for Economic Development Week, May ninth through the fifteenth, which is this week, whereas the International Economic Development Council, EDC, is celebrating its 92nd year as the premier professional organization in 2021. And whereas IEDC has designated May ninth through the fifteenth, 2021, as Economic Development Week. And whereas the economic development profession recognizes its role in a community's long-term success by addressing issues vital to businesses such as workforce availability, training, international trade, direct foreign investment incentives, and reduced costs of operations. And whereas the City of Fountain Economic Development Department promotes economic well-being and quality of life for our community by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas the Economic Development Department is engaged in a wide variety of settings, including urban and local, state, county, and federal governments, private, public partnerships, Chamber of Commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas the Economic Development Department is chaired to attract and retain businesses, develops a vibrant community, and improves the services and quality of life in our city. And whereas in 1987, the Economic Development Commission was established by the city council to lead a vision toward economic diversification, job growth and preservation, building a local tax base and equitable generation of wealth. And whereas City of Fountain continues to remain committed to supporting economic development activities and recognizes the importance of economic development in our community. And whereas city leaders work closely with county, state, federal, and international partners to help spur economic development, to foster growth, and to promote trade and commerce in the City of Fountain. And whereas the City of Fountain, Mayor and city council commends economic development for their hard work and dedication in promoting economic development projects and sustaining economic development activities in the city. Now, therefore, I, Gabriel P. Ortega, Mayor of Fountain, Colorado, hereby proclaim this week of May ninth through the fifteenth, 2021, as Economic Development Week, dated this eleventh day of May, 2021. I will make that my motion. No, no motion? No? We're just, that's a pro- okay, we proclaim it. And no, you know, you guys do a, and I know since you've been here, you really pushed a lot, and we've really gone really far places with, with our economy and what's going on with businesses, both, you know, a small business to large businesses, and just the amount of growth that we've had in the past 20 years. And, you know, I remember when Safeway was in Whitefield, and now we moved it to Fountain, and, you know, just all the things. The only thing I wish we had back was Baskin Robbins. So if you can work on that one, that would be awesome. What's that? Yeah, Baskin Robbins, okay. But. Well, I only need one, but I'm okay with that as well. But I do thank you for all the hard work that you guys do, and especially yourself, and just everything that we've got going on today as we move forward. So I will sign that, and I think we're good. Anybody else have comments on that? Go ahead.
Okay, really, this is, I think, more than ever in this last year, and then this coming year that's coming up. I think people are going to really lean on economic development, and I'm so glad that you're here to do that. There's, I know you fought for every dollar that's came to this community in the last year, applying for different grants and monies, not just for the urban renewal, but for different economic things that were coming down to help our community, our small businesses and larger businesses in this area. And, and I want to tell you that I really appreciate it. Unfortunately, your push is only beginning in some of those areas. It's not ending as the money keeps coming in, but that's a nice problem to have. So thank you very much. And in your urban renewal role, I am so excited to see this building over here getting revitalized, the new stairs in the back. It's just gonna look really, really nice and make that whole corner and just look really sharp, everything you guys keep doing. So keep up the good work, and thank you to the Economic Development Board. Lots of new things coming in, and they're on the cusp of seeing some exciting stuff happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're good, and we'll see you in a little bit. Okay, our next presentation is by Dr. Owen from Fountain Fort Carson, recognizing outstanding achievement in the school district. We have Mr. Trilch listed. Were you going to introduce this?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. So it's my honor to introduce the School District Eight Fountain Fort Carson Superintendent, Dr. Keith Owen, and Communications Director, Kristy McGee, who are gonna present to you this evening on some of the outstanding achievements that are going on in the district.
Okay, welcome.
Are you okay if we unmask?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
We've been vaccinated, but I always like to check.
I think we were just discussing that before, and I think everyone mostly is, we're in the numbers, so we're good.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, good evening, Mayor Ortega, esteemed council members. It's a privilege for us to be here today. My name's Keith Owen. I'm the superintendent for Carson School District. And before we get started with just a couple of things that have happened in the school district, I just want to again, thank you and the council for your support and partnership with Fountain Fort Carson School District. We have a really good partnership with the city, incredible strengths with the city manager, with the fire, with the police. You know, the SRO program that we have in our schools is just incredible, and we find that more and more encouraging and more and more supportive. Our principals really appreciate the SROs and the schools. Our staffs understand that they build relationships with kids. And so it's just, it's a great partnership that the school district has with the City of Fountain. And I just want to again tell you all thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yep. So real quick, we've, we've been really, like many of you have, through a crazy year. You know, this, this has been one for the books, and I've been in education for about 25 years, and I've never seen anything like this past year that we've had. But the thing I would tell you about our school district that we're just really proud of is we've served kids almost the entire school year. Kids have been in buildings, they've been in school, they've been getting instruction from their teachers, and we've only had short periods of remote learning. And so although it's been a huge challenge and an undertaking for our staff, we have been serving our kids in school every day, and that's not the case across the country. There's still a lot of school districts that are yet to see kids this school year, and some of them won't even see kids this school year. So it's just a testament to our staff and their dedication towards kids. So we have some exciting things that have been going on in the school district and recognitions of our administrative staff, our principals. And so we thought we'd come and share some of the exciting things that have been happening. Lois Skaggs, our principal at Abrams Elementary, which is on Fort Carson. She was just named the 2021 Colorado Elementary Principal of the Year. And if you've had a chance to meet Lois and a chance to see her in action, she is just an incredible principal, really supportive of the school, and just an amazing member of our administrative team in Fountain Fort Carson School District. Michelle Cannon, again, another incredible principal at Patriot Elementary. She was named the 2020 Colorado Elementary Rookie Principal of the Year. That's for an award for a principal in their first three years, and she has just done an outstanding job at Patriot Elementary, again, on Fort Carson, and really just is working to make sure kids' needs are met there at that school. Dr. Dallas, and some of you maybe have had a chance to meet Dr. Dallas, and the work that he's done at Fountain Middle School, which we're just extremely proud of. As you might know, about four or five years ago, we really undertook redoing Fountain Middle School. And the building that it is today and what it was before is just night and day. And Mary, you had a chance to see that transformation firsthand and really got to see just the incredible facility that Fountain Middle School has become. It is a beautiful building. Kids' needs are being met there every day. Dr. Dallas has been a huge part of changing not only the physical layout of that building, but the cultural experience that we have. He has really helped come in and hire staff, really made sure that we're meeting kids' needs. And Fountain Middle School has actually just really made a lot of progress over the last five years, and they're getting recognized. You probably saw they were on the Colorado Springs Gazette. What was it, Kristy? You want to come on up?
Fountain Middle School is one of the best of the Springs middle schools.
Right, yeah.
So it was in the Colorado Springs Gazette. They list the top three, and Fountain got silver out of, out of all the middle schools. And that's a user kind of ranked, but it just shows how much their community spoke up and advocated for them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and then the Trailblazer Award.
Yeah, and we just had a chance to celebrate Friday that they were named a Trailblazer School to Watch in Colorado, which over 100 middle schools get nominated for that, and they were down to two in Colorado, and Fountain Middle School was one of those. So just amazing work that Dr. Dallas has done at Fountain Middle School, and we're, we're sure excited for him to receive that award as well. So Rochelle Williams, she was named the 2020 Assistant Principal at Abrams Elementary, and that's a Colorado Elementary School Principal of the Year. Again, another outstanding member of our administrative team, and she just does incredible work. And I'll let Kristy do this one. I didn't really want to come and talk to you about this one, but Kristy, go ahead.
Well, and I'm Kristy McGee. I'm the communications director, so thank you for having us. You know, when I spoke to Mr. Trilch, I just really wanted an opportunity to showcase. I mean, I think as you can see, you know, we have an award-winning administrative team. I think that's what this showcases, and we just really wanted to make you guys aware of that and again say thank you. But Dr. Owen definitely deserves a lot of that credit for hiring the right staff, and I think you heard it tonight, that he really cares about kids and cares about the people that we employ. And so that's where his award came from. So we have the Colorado Superintendent of the Year down here, which is pretty outstanding, and he's been recognized in a couple of articles. So we're very grateful to have him at the helm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, thank you. I know we probably over our time, but just again, thank you for the partnership, and thank you for letting us come today and have a conversation with you. We're happy to do that every year. If it's something that you're interested in as well. The, the great thing about this last school year, which we've really seen come all the way through, is we have people that care about kids, and we're always trying to get better. We're always trying to do our jobs in a way that helps us do things better for kids. But at the heart of everything that we do, we have staff and administrators that care and want kids to be in school, and that, that's just been a huge part of our foundation. And we're going to continue to build on it and make it even better. We've got some exciting things happening in the district. We are finishing the AIM Center behind Fountain Fort Carson High School, which is for our Transitions Program, and it's really an exciting opportunity. It's also for the Phoenix Program, which is an alternative program for some kids that struggle in school. And we have, we're working with Fort Carson to obtain new parcel of land to move Abrams Elementary and build a new elementary school on post. But that's quite a process with Fort Carson to be able to secure land. So, but we, we're in the process of getting it done, and I think we should have a new site here within the next year. We are also working on an event center, a gymnasium for our high school, which you might have heard about. We hope to have that start construction on the fall. And that's gonna, that's gonna have an event center that will hold upwards of 5,000 people. And so that will really allow us to hold events and also do state basketball championships, basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, volleyball state championships. We'll be able to do quite a bit once that facility's done, and will really let us get to our larger vision of everything being on the Fort Fountain Fort Carson High School campus for the high school.
All right.
Any questions or anything else you need from me?
No, you know, I, you go on through that list of folks there. I remember when I was teaching at Jordan, we, we interviewed Ms. Cannon for one of our, I remember it was Assistant Principal or Principal, and it was a fight between a few different schools to see which one could, it was more, we want you over here, and, and, but yeah, we were disappointed that she went up with the post, but, you know, it was good for the district. And, and just everybody else there, I, you know, I firsthand, working under Dr. Dallas, when he, he and I both started the middle school together. But yeah, no, just different visions, different ways and philosophies of moving education forward and, and the way things have changed prior to COVID and where, you know, all the pendulum swings and things like that are occurring. I think the right people at the right time in some very key areas, like the middle school. Yeah, I can tell you, probably six to 20 years prior to that, last five years, you wouldn't have had a lot of parents that were, you know, voting for Fountain Middle School to be up in that list. So that was a, sure, a breath of fresh air to see that. And, and, you know, to have parents that are, you know, back in your school like that. And, you know, all, all my, you know, the schools I went through, and it means extra special to me as well. And, and, but thank you for coming and sharing the story of the school district. And, and we do appreciate that, that partnership, especially with their SROs. Those men and women who go in, they, they, they don't see themselves, you know, as just police officers. These is part of your staff and, and part of the family of kids. And, and I just think of all the good things that have occurred over the last few years. I think we're, we're second to none in that, and we're a model for other schools across the country, really, in what we do. And so I, I, along with everybody else up here, just appreciate the willingness to have that partnership. So, you know, we, there was a time when that was even difficult to get that moving. So thank you for that. Todd, you have something?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to do with Dr. Owen here, another partnership and a project that we're doing over at Jimmy Camp in Ohio, and D8 and Dr. Owen have agreed to be a part of the assistance and funding that, is a signalized intersection there at Jimmy Camp in Ohio. So we're partnering with D8, and it's even more important with all their facilities going in. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank him while he's here. We've got the engineering going on that, and we'll get that completed as quick as we can.
Yep.
Yeah, anybody that spent time in that line at about 3:20, 3:30 every day understands why we need to do that. So, no, it's great. Thank you for that, too. It's gonna be, I think, a huge addition and really allow traffic to flow a lot smoother through that area.
Yeah, I moved, so I didn't have to go through that anymore. All right, I think that's it. Yeah. All right.
All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to Dr. Owen on your award. All right, for the no attendees online, we will be back at six o'clock sharp for our meeting. You all right, Carl? All right. All right, good evening, and welcome to our May 11th, 2021 City Council Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of the republic, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Yeah.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
All right, we're just gonna kind of just keep moving forward. We have no attendees online, so I'm not gonna worry about your part in this, Yolanda. Hope you're okay with that. We will move on to item number four. We will move on to item number four, Presentations and Board Commission Committee Appointments. And we have appoint one new member to the Economic Development Commission. Ms. Bailey, come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and public. Kimberly Bailey, Economic Development for the City of Fountain. We are presenting to you an applicant, Mr. James Flowers, who is now serving as the President and the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. The former president did serve on our EDC Commission, but the replacement of that appointment does have to go through this process with council for the final appointment with Mr. James Flowers.
Okay. I forgot to grab me an agenda, so I have to flip back and forth. Mr. Flowers is also, he's been on the chamber for quite some time now, and so I've gotten to know him through the years, just as his role on the chamber and just recently to go over, where he's taking over as Tom Downing has moved out of the city, so, which is unfortunate for us, but I know he was on some new things in his life and is very excited and did finally get a chance to talk to him and about all that. So any questions about Mr. Flowers from council?
This will fulfill the final vacancy that we actually do have on the EDC. So with the replacement of this appointment, we'll have a full board functioning. Again.
All right, so with that, if everybody would, if anybody would like to make a motion. Ms. Thompson.
Move to approve Mr. Flowers being on EDC.
Okay, Ms. Duncan?
I'm second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Are you ready? We can, okay, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kimberly. All right, next is item number five, City Council Agenda Requests and Announcements. I will start with Ms. Duncan, anything?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to remind that Fountain, Cross Creek is, Cross Creek Cleanup is May 16, 2021 at 10:00 AM, and one of the organizers is Fountain, the Cleanup Fountain. So again, on May 16th, that's this Saturday at 10:00 AM, we're gonna have cleanup at Cross Creek. Also, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we should take time to remember the importance of self-care and helping others. The challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic is important, more important than ever, that mental health struggles are real, and there is no stigma, so please ask for help. So there are a lot of agencies now talking about domestic violence and a lot of mental health things that are going on in our community, so I'm asking the public that if you're having any of these issues, please ask for help.
All right, yeah, important message, and yeah, we have to, I know with the COVID, it kind of maybe ramped up a little bit as well, and just wanna make sure you're, there's always someone willing to talk, even if it's just a sit and listen to you and vent if you need to, so thank you for that. Mr. Geek, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Estes?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Ms. Thompson?
All right, I get to take everybody's time.
So you don't?
I do. I do. It's been a whole two weeks. We had our first Old Town Meeting and for the Revitalization Committee, and that was really exciting. Peaks and Pines had it. We had a fair turnout, and, but it's great to get that started and kicked off again. I wanted to thank everybody who came out on the Great American Cleanup Day and picked up trash and fountain. It is always amazing how much gets picked up around the community, the bags and bags and couches and refrigerators, on and on, but thank you to everybody who helped clean up our community. Wanted to make sure everybody was aware that the Superintendent of D3 Scott Campbell is retiring this year, so if you see him, you might thank him for all his years of service to our community and for all the kids. Through CML, I don't know if anybody else got a chance to attend the water meeting today for Part One on drought. It was really, really interesting, and I believe the slides and the presentation are available on their website. If you wanted to catch up with that, it might be worth your time. And we continue to have legislative meetings from PPACG, and there's just a couple of bills I wanted to bring to your attention. There is a bill, House Bill 1175, that if that bill passes, a person who gets a traffic citation would have the option, instead of paying the court for the services of supporting our court here in Fountain, they would be able to make a donation to a nonprofit instead. Or, and so I'd like, I would ask that you guys look up that bill, 1175, and review it and consider writing a letter of opposition to that, because we need the money for our courts to run down here in Fountain, and they could be potentially making up to a $500 donation to a nonprofit that would do no good to our community. So I think Tori's gonna be looking at that one a little bit more, too. Also, the big transportation bill, Senate Bill 260, dropped yesterday. It's almost a 200-page bill, so if you don't, can't get to sleep some night, you can look it up and kind of peruse through it, see all the different fees and different things that are being included in that. There is one section that's causing a lot of concern to people who are in the transportation industry and cities, and that is what they're calling Section 28 of the bill. Section 28 is around page 96, so you can find it a little bit easier. The concern is that, is that adding emission standards to projects that are done locally. So if we decided we needed to widen a road here that we would get funding for, and this committee of non-elected officials came back and said that the emission standards or reductions didn't meet their goals for greenhouse gas emission reductions, they could deny the project. So it takes local control away from us deciding where things are needed in our community, and that's really important to maintain. So I think as we look at that bill overall, if we can get some people to look at Section 28 of that bill, we need to really look at and think about how that could affect some projects we want to do. So if we want to make a four-lane, because we have congested traffic, we wanted to widen two lanes to maybe three lanes or maybe even four lanes, then they could come back and say that they didn't feel the project met the state overall goals, and so we need to remain local control on that. So if you have any concerns about that, you might reach out to your legislators. And then Saturday, I believe we have our first motorcycle ride through the community for a veterans group this weekend, and they're going to be ending, so you might be looking for them. I believe they are starting up at the, I'm not gonna say the name right, Hungry, oh, Hungry Ohana, they're gonna be starting there and then driving around, and they are raising money for homeless vets in El Paso County, and then they will be ending around noontime at Peaks and Pines, and that's also in association with the blast that, you know, they kind of blew us off the map down here. So they're doing a special brew for that, so if you'd like to stop by there this weekend and enjoy it and say thank you to some veterans that are gonna be riding around raising money, I think it's gonna be a fun event and a good kickoff to start the spring, and I'm sure you guys are gonna be escorting them around town. Yep, I'm not sure what their exact ride route is, but. Okay, it's always nice if we can kind of know bits and pieces of it. People like to get out and hold flags, and I think they really enjoy that. If we can, yep, that'd be great, thank you. So, all right, so lots of stuff starting to go on.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have is, as you know or may have heard, with the new census, Colorado has been awarded another congressional spot, basically, but, and because we've gained so many people in the state, and so supposedly, the governor, I'm assuming it's the governor, put a commission of folks who are from either side of the aisle to figure out where they're gonna land this person, obviously somewhere in the front range, more than likely, and there are already some ideas of what they may do and how they may split up districts or move things around to make room or make a new district for this one congressperson. We've been approached by a group that is actively engaged in trying to, and make sure that it's done fairly and cleanly, and so we were asked, sharing, you might have to help me, what was this, what was the name of the group that wanted to?
Let me see if I can find it.
Okay, I have it here. I don't remember. It's the Colorado Neighborhood Coalition, and so what we're asking the coalition to do is to basically keep El Paso County whole. There's a thought that they are trying to split the county up, and really, one of the things that I've heard that we're, that is a possibility is they would move Fountain into the Pueblo Congressional District, which makes absolutely zero sense in the world, because we don't have any ties to Pueblo at all. Everything that we do is tied to El Paso County, Fort Carson. We would lose our relationship with Fort Carson and our Congress representation and that, so it's, it's feeling less and less bipartisan and more and more partisan, and so even though supposedly, again, it's supposed to be even and, and the talk is out there that we're doing that, so we were asked to provide a letter. They gave us an example letter, but it was like three pages long, which is way too much, and so what we, I had Scott help me with, he wrote up a quick letter. It's a one-pager, and it references their letter that they're gonna be sending, but it also just talks about Fountain and how we're the America's Millennium City, and largely due to the fact that diversity of our community reflects the overall demographics of the nation as a whole, our strong ties with Fort Carson, all those things, and how we're really a part of El Paso County, not Pueblo. It seems silly that they would do that, but in the past year, we've seen some really silly things from our government above us, so I'm asking that if you would be so willing to sign the letter, I can send you a copy tonight so you can review, and then if you can get down to, I think we'll have maybe Lexi hold on to the letter, and if you can sign that. If you don't want to sign it, let us know so we can, right now I have everybody's name on it. If you don't want to sign it, that's totally up to you, but if you do want to sign it, please let us know, and we need to get it back to these folks, I think, by Friday, so. Do we have any questions on that, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah. That council, that member thing is supposed to pick it, there's supposed to be a third Democrat, a third Republican, and a third independent, if there is such a thing, and the only other thing about it is the one thing passed, that it has to be contiguous. Well, that's kind of shaky, us being contiguous with Pueblo as compared to Springs, and so that's the one thing they might have to stand on to give a little fight out of that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the whole thing is silly, really, and you see this, I've seen this play out over the last few, couple of years, whatever, where the side of the aisle that's in the minority, you know, when they all of a sudden take them to the majority, they change things to fit their narrative and to fit the way they want things to go, but I don't think they realize that at some point in time, it's gonna shift again, and we've seen this occur over the last 200 and some odd years of our country, where a party will be in control for a while, but it eventually will shift, and the things that they're passing now, that's gonna benefit them for the short term, is really gonna bite them in the butt in the long term. So instead of just leaving a system where it is and maybe making some small tweaks, you know, it's just for where we are in this country, I guess, let's make a drastic change and not think through clearly how, what the ramifications are, both short term and long term. So again, if you are so willing, I'll send this after our meeting's over, so you guys can peruse it and read it, and then we will, if you can get down and sign it by Friday, that would be great, so we can get it sent off. Any questions on that? Okay, all right, that's all I had on my time, and so we will keep moving on our agenda, and we are on item number six, public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you email your questions to city clerk prior to the meeting at council meetings at fountaincolorado.org. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but would direct staff to follow up, and out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Last I checked, I haven't checked here in a second, we only have one attendee on now, and I don't see a hand up there. Anybody in audience would like to come up, please come forward. And just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Gigi Holman, and I'm the library manager, the Fountain Library Manager, and
and I'm Shirley Martinez, and I'm the Director of Diversity and Equity Inclusion for all the library districts.
And this evening, we're here to let you know and folks know that the library is hosting a vaccine clinic next Wednesday for the public. It is under Governor Polis's Vaccine Equity for All Clinics, and we were a site that was, or that was selected recently, and so this clinic will take place May 19th, next Wednesday, from 1:00 to 5:00, and you can register through our website, ppld.org/vaccines.
And we just did one of the same clinics at the San Creek Library last week on Wednesday, and this is for us to actually get out to the Black Indigenous and people of color within the southeast side in Fountain to get them their vaccines. We're also using this opportunity to get the word out to our youth, 16 and older, and we are waiting the okay for us to do the 12 to 15 on that day, so we're kind of hoping that they'll approve some things by the state for us to be able to get it to 12 to 15, but you'll be able to sign up online. There's the QR code, and more of the libraries are being used to do these vaccines, and I, as a grandparent, and, you know, with kids going to school, I just picked my grandson up for the fourth time for quarantine, because somebody in the class had it, so it's imperative that we get our kids vaccinated.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We did see, I saw that information earlier today that we're having that, so thank you for doing that and reaching out.
Yes, Mayor, just to add to that, we did, Ms. Gigi contacted me. We put their flyer on our website and our social media, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else publicly heard? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. We have one item under consent. Unless someone would like to remove that, what would be the determination of council? Mr. Geek?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Ms. Thompson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. It's a request of a corporate report of changes on two-for-minute malt beverage liquor license for Walmart, Inc. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, and we will have minutes from our last meeting and this meeting at our next council meeting in two weeks, so. No old business tonight. Item nine, new business, 9B. I'm opening a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1763, an ordinance approving a request by SMH Consultants on behalf of Gideon Baptist Church for approval of an overall development plan for property located at 1320 CNS Road, and here and after, more specifically described in Exhibit A and B, and, oh, Ms. Serrano?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. Gabby Serrano, Planning, City of Fountain Planning Department. The item before you today will be the Cross Creek Church Overall Development Plan. The property is some planned unit development district, and the address is located, the property is located at 1320 CNS Road. The request is to approve an overall development plan of 4.85 acres for Cross Creek Overall Development Plan, for Cross Creek Church Overall Development Plan. The owner at this time desires to do an expansion to the existing building, however, due to the property being some planned unit development district, the applicant will need to include and submit an overall development plan to establish the development standards and the uses of the property. At this time, there are currently two modulators on the property that were approved with a temporary use application. The church has worked very hard and has done a great job on showing, and has done a really good job in showing that they want to move forward with removing these modulators, and also moving forward in addition to the church. The application, the addition will be a 5,225 square feet addition that will replace the modulators. At this time, there's not a, there's not an access being proposed. Right now, they will be keeping the, the two locations of access that they have at this time. The drainage, the property drains into Jimmy Kim Creek. Drainage fees will be collected when this property gets plotted. Drainage fees will be collected when this property gets plotted. Open, the open space elements is that per the overall development plan, there's a requirement that 15% of open space needs to be proposed with the property. The applicant has met that open space requirement per code. As you can see here, the over, this is the overall development plan that the applicant has submitted. It shows the uses, the future, the future uses that the that the property will have. It will also include the setbacks, building height, lack coverage, and open space requirements per code. Based on the future land use of the comprehensive development plan, this property is actually single-family residential. It is not consistent with the future land use. However, churches and schools recognize compatible land uses in all zoning, in all future land uses. Staff recommends approval of the overall development plan for Cross Creek because it's consistent with the review criteria of the overall development plan of code. At the Planning Commission hearing of April 7 of 2021, the board members voted all yes to this overall development plan. And staff recommends approval for the ordinance on first reading with the condition that a site development plan must be submitted prior to the construction of the addition of the church. Any questions for staff at this time?
I have no questions. Is the applicant here? Did you have anything? Is that the applicant?
Yes, the applicant is here today. I can, I can have.
You guys, are you guys good? Just wait? Okay, sounds good. All right, any questions for Gabby? Oh, yeah, Mr. Applegate.
Yeah, is it Gideon Baptist Church or Cross Creek Church?
It's Cross Creek Church.
Who is Gideon Baptist Church?
That is the property owner.
Okay, but they will be getting rid of those modulators, huh?
Yes, they will be getting rid of the modulators.
That's good news.
Have a timeline on that because, no offense, but sometimes we get into nonprofits and and they, then they come back and they say, well, we built the sanctuary. Now we want to keep the the modulators. And we kind of get into some back and forth things. So do they have a timeline on when the modulators would be removed?
I can refer that question to the applicant at this point.
Yep, thank you. And just state your name for the record.
Michael Haley, I'm the pastor at Cross Creek Church. Time timeframe is really set up on as we go through the overall development plan here. And the next phase is the plat. We've already talked to a construction company that's going to, and an architect. So once we get through the the development plan and the plats, our plan is to start as soon as we can.
So the modulators get removed to to put the sanctuary where they're at?
No, the the modules are removed once the building is complete because the the building is to take place of the modulators.
Right.
So because the one modular is for our children's ministry, another one has children's ministry and office space.
Right.
And so we can't, we have to use that space until we have had it replaced.
Right, okay.
Does that answer your question?
It it does. I just, like I said, we've run into situations before where where people come along and they build their beautiful new building. And then they decide, oh, we're growing so much, we want to just keep this. And then it just keeps kind of going on and on and on for years and years and years. So we'd like to kind of avoid that.
Right, I understand. That's not our desire. Our desire is this will, this will, the building we're building will give us a little space, more space than we already have, so that we can grow into it. So, thanks. And to answer your question, the Gideon Baptist Church, in 2010, we filed a DBA. So it's officially Gideon Baptist Church doing business as Cross Creek Church. That clears it up.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions? All right, I don't see any online. So I will close the public hearing. And if no further discussion, what will be determination of council on this item? Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I moved to approve ordinance number 1763 on first reading, subject to condition.
Okay, and Ms. Duncan? All right, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thanks a lot. Good luck in your further building there. So, all right, we'll move on. Item nine C, report to council on the state of Colorado. OEDIT Rural Technical Assistance Program, RTAP, awarded 2020 grant funding on behalf of the Ohio Avenue Placemaking Campaign. City of Fountain, Colorado, Ms. Bailey.
Evening again, Mayor, Council, and Public. So I am pleased to report out to you tonight regarding a lot of the sweat equity that went into this program through 2020. And it was a challenging time of understanding and COVID and and personal distancing and things like that. So I think you'll see that we did bear some fruit out of this support funding we received from the state. And it was strictly a resource allocation. There was no dollars involved in this program. It was just consultant work that was in kind, as well as some of the contributions from some of the state's staff along this channel. So I think I can work it, is what I've been informed of. All right, so the consultant was at a, is out of Glenwood Springs. They're called Community Builders. They're quite renowned with downtown districts, community placemaking efforts, just trying to cultivate that sense of place for people to gather and feel safe and warm and, you know, protected in the environment. So like I said, we were awarded the grant in late 2019. The allocation of resources came through in 2020. We did have a pause, and that pause was due to March 2020, when we all got informed of a COVID pandemic. And we kind of had to realign some of the deliverables under this customary program. And again, we did also have to kind of pull together a leadership team. And you'll see that bulletted who were those participating members of that team itself. Unfortunately, because of COVID, the Community Builders was not able to travel into our community, which is something they would they would typically do. They would host some public forums. They would really lead that engagement with the public. But a lot of that really did fall on city staff. So I highly have to applaud the City of Fountain's GIS Division, the City of Fountain Park and Rec Division, and also the Public Engagement Officer, because a lot of that bandwidth that would have been handled had to be brought in-house and facilitated by our own manpower. In addition, the campaign, per se, from a public perspective, was ran from summer of 2020 through fall of 2020. So you had that concentration period of really trying to get that public engagement and outreach facilitated during this timeframe. So in the winter, we kind of buttoned up all of that due diligence, report finding, and assessing what does placemaking 2.1 look like as we come out of this program? So what is placemaking? Placemaking is technically meant to assess what are the uses in your corridor or in your district? What are those traffic patterns? And we have a lot of different traffic patterns in this focus area. And when I talk about a focus area, we're talking about Ohio Avenue, literally right out here in front of City Hall. So you're working from US 8587, which is a state highway, over to just before you get to the railroad tracks on the east side of of Ohio Avenue. So it's a very focused footprint area. In that area, you have three different schools. In that area, you have several daycare centers. In that area, you have several centers of worship. You also, Ohio Avenue serves as your main artery for vehicular traffic, trying to get east-west connections through this community. So you have a lot of density concentration of different uses. And how do you make them work together from a placemaking perspective? As I mentioned, we did pull together a leadership team. And here's your punch list. I call them the baker's dozen of who contributed to this endeavor. So you saw a broad swath of representation from Urban Renewal to Economic Development Commission, to the Old Town Working Group, to city council members, our historian network of people, as well as the staff that was tagged to make sure we champion this project forward. What was the campaign timeline? As I mentioned briefly before, you had three months of concentrated public engagement outreach. The program actually ran a duration of six months. And that's a lot of that sweat equity that was done by that leadership team in advance, as well as post-assessment of those findings. And through that process, we were able to garner over 190 public, positive public feedback surveys. I have to tell you, I was highly impressed during a time of stress and pandemic that there was a lot of positivity that actually came out through this campaign. And then lastly, what were the basically boilerplateing of the themes of this campaign that resonated from the public voice? So there was a high attention and need to address pedestrian versus bicycle versus vehicle traffic patterns and public safety of those interconnections, of those use of of transit. Also activating underutilizing spaces. So we drive it every day, but a lot of times we put our blinders on and we don't see what are some of those barren pockets that aren't really being programmed or highly activated from a community fulfillment perspective. And then lastly, how do we use the arts to tell our historian history? Was also something that resonated through that public feedback process. So here's your storyboard for basically boilerplateing that public feedback. It echoes what I kind of just buttoned up into those three main bullet points. But also at the bottom, you'll see a succession path that shows the patterns that we've done in the past through master planning have not been in vain or lack of appropriate funding allocations. They actually get us to this point to continue the planning of the district and pushes forward hopefully into some grant funding award missions for the community. I thought you might find this interesting. Through our work efforts in this, in the surveys, we, during one of our leadership sessions, we were able to look at a word board. And those are the items that are more bolded or more predominant of word use are things that were more frequent in the survey feedback. And then the things that were more shallow or subtle are in a lower bold point. So it's interesting to see the diversity of those of those words that was coming from the public voice of importance to that. This is a really hard storyboard to look at, but it was the best one I could pull together for you to look at. And I think if I have a pointer, yes, I do. So here we are sitting literally today, right here at City Hall. This is the Ohio and Main Street intersection area. That was the most important area of improvement that resonated through those public surveys. As of three weeks ago, I presented with Brandy of our Public Works Division, as well as our transportation consultants, and was able to announce that we actually received funding to complete this entire intersection improvement. So because of this placemaking campaign and where we were through that due diligence process, submitting that grant to CDOT's Revitalizing Main Streets program was highly important for us gardening that fund to to complete this intersection. So that will be done by the end of this year. So hopefully, when the mayor does his tree lighting and council is there this season, we will see a much different intersection right outside our front door. Then as we go west, we come across to Race Street. And Race Street has been identified actually as the better traffic pattern north and south to utilize as a bicycle mobility lane. There's less friction with vehicular traffics. There's more right of way to utilize on that corridor. So that is what has also resonated out of this program. And as you continue to move east, you come into the Aga and Blast Park Urban Pedestrian Trail Network. So Urban Renewal, the city Public Works, property owners along this corridor really have been working the last couple of years to bridge that linear area to create that urban park space. And when I mean park, I mean very natural skate park, not a lot of grass, not a lot of maintenance, but just a safe pedestrian corridor to move north and south within the district area. And then ultimately, you end up at 8587. And along this, you see a lot of greenway, a lot of beautification. There's a lot more spinoffs, and that's what we're going to talk about as we close this presentation regarding placemaking 2.1. Where do we have alternatives going next? So we took back the boilerplate findings, and we went back to each of our working commissions, EDC, Old Town Steering Committee, Urban Renewal. And we said, are there certain areas that may align with your initiatives that we can keep moving this needle forward in regards to corridor improvement or placemaking initiatives for this particular area? And as you can see, the checkbox notes that you do have some overlap. There are a couple that are all three across that will work collaboratively through the end of this year, the last six months, through some of these programs. And then there's some that really work better for, say, the EDC or the Old Town Group to work more at a grassroots level with business engagement areas is what we've identified. Of course, none of this happens unless we have the city's support and engagement, and we naturally do have that. But the city is really put in more of a position of larger infrastructure improvements or long-term master plan improvements. And these are the areas that were identified out of the surveys and the assessments of what's feasible for this corridor to focus on. As I mentioned, we've already been awarded the funding for the Main Street and Ohio intersection. So that is kind of a checked item that will be completed by the end of this year. In addition, we have the EPA program that's going on right now. And the Blast Park and Aga Park corridor has been selected by that Coalition team to do kind of a conceptual design plan. What does that urban park space even look like? What may be some of those amenities that come out of that? So that's already been awarded, and we'll be working through that probably through 2022. So it will be a more long-term vision scope of work. And then we also do have the adaptive use of space. So one of the benefits, we could say, from COVID, and I know there's very few, is that we've got creative of how do we bring people out into a gathering outdoor environment, but assure public safety, assure social distancing, and really make sure that we're having that sense of place? We've done that with bringing the tree lighting back in as of last year's ceremony, right? And we've done a couple of other of those types of examples last year through the Arts Month campaign, where we had musicians in the in the courtyard for two years, for two-hour stint each evening during the dusk hour. So there are new adaptive uses that came out from applicability of thought and that we look to continue that effort going forward. So all of this builds upon what we've already been investing in for quite a while. So as we look at this, we did a 2012 wave, wave finding signage. We already have kind of the historical center district signage already documented and adopted by council at that time. We had the Old Town Revitalization Plan in 2014. We've already actually implemented 12 of those measures out of that plan. In addition, we did the THK Town Design Effort under the Urban Renewal Funding. And that actually implemented five different replicated programs out of that initiative. And now, even coming off of the placemaking at the end of 2020, we've already instituted four of those programs. So we are not letting master plans sit on the shelf and collect dust. We are actually taking extracts out of those plans and tying them into development missions and moving them forward and really making of a proactive use of those. So I've told you where we think we have some sweet spots of opportunity. I've also shared with you how we think some of the boards have already grasped on to those opportunities and have put them into their initiatives for this year. But I have to say, from a public perspective, it really needs to take also community engagement. And it also needs to take the passion of individuals looking to revitalize this area of the community. So what we wanted to do is put together a sampling of some pilot ideas that anybody could grasp on to and bring those forth to any of our boards or bring those forth to the district ambassador, which is Peaks and Pines Brewery, and really just start that communication of adding value to this mission that we've already been able to document through this process. Because it can't take one body, it can't take five bodies. It has to take a multitude of bodies to actually participate and engage and see the progression of some of these elements. And I thought you might like to see a splash screen of how we have really seen a lot of gatherings in our courtyard. But unfortunately, that courtyard is not utilized as much as it potentially has that adaptive use of space to portray. So I just want to say that in a placemaking study that we actually read just a little bit ago, that if you have more pedestrian foot traffic or bicyclist patterns, you you increase 62% of sales to your local businesses. So vehicular traffic is a get from point A to point B. I'm a thoroughfare. I need to get just where to my destination is. But if you create the sense of place and placemaking of gathering, you'll actually have more foot traffic and that foot track actually creates more economic vitality for your businesses. And that's what we're trying to generate through this initiative. So with that, I'm going to close and I'll leave it on this slide in case there's any additional questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Bailey on the placemaking? I've kind of gotten it now on two different ways through the Fura and then this. But yeah, just looking at that, I, it draws, draws my attention of the bump outs and the weirdness it created because of things. But where I thought, man, it'd be kind of neat to have something like that and just people's ideas and thoughts.
Well, I have to say, you have to apply the improvements to the landscape constraints that you have.
Right.
So for example, at Maine and Ohio, we know we have stormwater pattern flow constraints. We know we have a lot of larger fleet that comes through this corridor with school buses and trash receptacles and things like that. So at the early time of that thought, it wasn't fully engineered, unfortunately, because of the landscape impacts that we have. We've gotten through all that through the funding we received this year from the Revitalizing Main Street Initiative. And as we presented to you just a couple of weeks ago. So I think we'll, we'll all be very pleased with those improvements and how they will actually function in that particular intersection.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I would just, I, I love all of everything that you presented to us. I would like to see incorporated a hayride, hayride tour.
That's a great idea. And we're not bound by the ideas we put up on that splash screen. It's just to create some thought, right? And I think that would be pretty awesome.
I just want to say thank you to your team for all the work that you put into this, to get us together and discuss this, because there were some exciting things come out of this. And it's just fun to see the history of Fountain remembered and yet while also moving us forward. So thank you for all the work that you put in.
Thank you.
I think one of your comments at the very beginning is we're not sitting on these plans. And I know in this particular area, a lot of people, that was their biggest criticism of the city is you guys talk about all these things to do down here, but nothing ever occurs. And, and I know since you've been kind of moving through this all, you know, getting us through, it's, we've seen a lot of progress in different places. That building across the street, you know, is kind of our biggest example. And so, yeah, it's exciting. I think it's great stuff. So.
It is.
And we're getting more people engaged on the, the topic as well, in a positive way. Before it's, we don't like that because you guys are the government. We don't like it. But now getting, I think, more of that positive, you know, interaction and, and engagement that I think will really lend itself to what we're really hoping will become of this, this area here. So.
Yeah, we did, thanks to the leadership team, because they had to pull up their bootstraps as well and get participative in the field. But we reached out to the senior center. We reached out to the school district in this nucleus area, worked with the parent committees, really tried to make sure we got as much broad diversity of outreach as possible through that engagement process. And I think it bared a lot of good fruit through that, in that public commentary.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll be honest, Mr. Mayor, I was really nervous when we went out to the public comment time. You know, you know how social media is right now. And I tell you, people really kind of got excited about this, the comments. I think ninety-nine, about 99% of them were really positive. You kind of look at the pictures and say, that might work and maybe kick off some ideas. So I think, I think it was a good timing, even though it was a little bit more awkward and difficult to do. Maybe we got a little bit more participation, people really thinking about getting excited about things, opening up and seeing some of this done.
Right. And I will share, this content has been published to the city's website under the Old Town Revitalization section. So any interested party can, can find the spoiler plated information there as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That is it for our agenda tonight. It's on item number 10, Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officia reports. I'll start with Mr. Evans.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of updates to let everyone know. Sylvia has set the date for the Scotts hearing and that letter was delivered to them today. So that will occur on June 10th. So we're moving forward with the Scotts hearing. What's that? You all don't have to be there, so that's a good thing. And just to let everyone know, with, with Jimmy Camp in Ohio coming up with D8, I thought it was just a good time to give you some quick updates on the three projects, the Moving Fountain Forward projects that we're working on this year. Jimmy Camp in Ohio, the engineering has started with that. So Carl is helping out with some electric poles that need to be moved. And we appreciate that. He jumped on that right away. We'll be going out and speaking of one of the neighbors referenced some possible right-of-way at that corner, but it is still planned to be a signaled intersection with a turn lane from Jimmy Camp out east to Ohio. One lane that will go directly from, again, north into Cumberland and then also designated left turn onto Ohio westbound as well. So as Dr. Owen said, we're hoping that's going to really alleviate a lot of the issues at that intersection, like that signal has done for us at CNS and Fountain Mesa. So that's moving forward and we're at the engineering. The nice thing about what's going to go on at that intersection, it's not going to require a complete closure of that intersection like a roundabout would. So as soon as we get that engineering done, everything in place, we'll be able to start working on that. Now regardless if school is in session or not, which is nice. Instead of like a two-month window in the summertime, we can get that going. And we don't have to order any special light poles like we did at Fountain Mesa. So that shouldn't be a hindrance.
But it'll kind of take five years to make.
I'll knock on wood, yeah, as everything's going now. Carson, the engineering has also started on that and we've started meetings. Brandy's got another one this week with CDOT, reference a green tea intersection at Carson and 8587. The discussions I had with their engineers, there wasn't a whole lot of pushback from them. So we're hoping that just continues so we can get some relief for those folks getting out of that neighborhood with Southmore closed. So that's moving forward as well. And the Indiana, we were in discussions with our consultants yesterday. It is still sitting in the legal department of the railroad, who is housed out of Dallas. So offered us making a trip out there and trying to get movement on that. But they don't even know if they're back in the office so that we could get face-to-face to somebody. So we're going to keep pushing that and that's the only thing hindering us on getting going on, on the Indiana project. But we do have urgency because we do have a lot of grant funds that are sitting out there that we need to utilize. So if we need to make a couple trips to get them going, we're going to make those trips. So that'll be the big focus this year for the engineering department in terms of public projects of getting those things off and running and getting a couple of them completed. Hopefully, that's all I've got, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Todd. Troy, anything?
The only thing I had was just a reminder that we've got the, the final installment of this round for the, the single hauler meeting tomorrow night. That's a virtual-only meeting starting at 6 o'clock. So log in at 6 o'clock. It's, it's mostly scheduled for a Q and A. We've been in, had the, the blog open for the last month or so, following our first two meetings and gotten a lot of good questions, a lot of good feedback. And so we'll kind of do a final round of, of Q and A virtually tomorrow night. And then, and that kind of puts, that's kind of the last round or that's the last piece of this round of public engagement for the single hauler. So tune in tomorrow night. But that's all that I had.
All right. Thank you. Commander, anything from PD?
Oh, sir.
All right. I saw Mr. Blakenhip come in. Anything from utilities? All right. I was going to go to you and then he, he walked in at the last minute. So. All right. Kristy and Ms. Serrano, anything from you guys? You good?
I'd just like to announce that we have several vacancies on both Planning Commission and our Board of Adjustment. So if you know anybody who's interested in serving their community and isn't really where, isn't sure where to start, that's a really great place. Many of you guys served on one or both of those boards in your tenure with the city. So if you know anybody, please encourage them to submit an application.
Wait, we only got to do 10 years?
I said tenure.
Oh.
Not 10 years. That was your choice.
It was. I can't blame anybody but myself on that one. Okay. Mr. Trilch?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to give a readout on how our pest control in our governmental support agreement is going on Fort Carson. Last week, I had the opportunity to do a ride-along with our pest control provider, Sorenson Pest Control, and got all over Fort Carson. I mean, we are, we are providing pest control services to a vast area on that base. And I think I learned more about how you control prairie dogs than I ever thought that I would learn. It was very informative, but we sat down afterwards and had our second quarterly update meeting with the Garrison's Public Works Department. They're very pleased with how the pest control is working. And so, you know, amazingly, we're in July going to be finishing the very, the first year of that. It's one down and nine years to go. So, so far, so good. And just wanted to pass along that, that, you know, that partnership is really working well.
Okay. You mean with all that artillery, it's that hard to take care of ground dogs?
Those prairie dogs are, yeah, they're, they're something.
Okay. Well, and I'm sorry to the animal rights groups, but they're nasty. So, okay.
They actually cause, and they caught, I learned that, you know, it causes quite a danger to training, to the, to the facilities there as soldiers are getting out there, trying to use those facilities for training. Even went out to Turkey Creek where they keep the horses that they use for like their mounted cavalry. So, and they have concerns about the horses stepping in the holes and hurting themselves. So there's actually a lot of legitimate concerns. And so, you know, we are, we're helping the garrison address that.
And really, I'm not that sorry about it. But anyway, okay, thank you. And Ms. Huffman, anything from City Clerk's office? We do have executive session?
We do.
Okay. So I will quickly go through council. Ms. Duncan?
Okay. Quickly, I just want to thank the community. We ended our book drive, the youth council ended the book drive the end of May, I mean, end of April. And we, my garage is, is completely full with books. We will have more information to follow and more pictures to put out there. So again, thanks to the community and everyone that helped us get the books.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Geek? I just want to tell Carl that you're making headway out there. Looks pretty nice out there on Link Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Applegate?
I don't have anything else. Ms. Estes?
I want to dovetail in on Councilmember Thompson's about the event this weekend at Peaks and Pines Brewery. It is the, the Blast from 1888 when the train blew up here in Fountain. So we have them, and they're going to introduce the new Blast 1888 Brew. And please come out and the Historical Society folks will be there and you can learn about, more about the history of our great town. And that is being sponsored, co-sponsored by the Friends of the Fountain Fairview Cemetery. So it's a great way to learn about Fountain and support a local business. This is also Historic Preservation Month, National Historic Preservation Month. And so a big shout out to Kimberly and her staff, the economic development for their preserving our wonderful historic Woodman Building. And so great job on that and it's a treasure for our community. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Thompson?
I just have one quick question, and it's kind of historical in nature. But the TB hut that is over in the Christiansen space, I believe it is, is, is that south by the, by the life, that one? Yeah. But by the library, it's, it needs some love. I don't know if the city owns it. The Historical Society is supposed to take care of it, but the roof's fallen, I mean, the roof's fallen off and, you know.
If city owns it, but there, there's windows available. We just have to get the staffing to get them in. And I'm sure we can.
I think it's, I think it's beyond windows.
Yeah, yeah, but no, we.
So anyways.
They do have some windows and stuff. And that, you know, that was transplanted in here.
Yes.
So that's the, yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll follow up on that and see.
Yeah, the roof's got some boards coming off and the paint's all scratched. If we're going to have it there, it needs to look nice. That's all I'm trying to say. All right.
Okay. I have nothing tonight. And I will let Ms. Huffman go ahead and read.
Thank you. I'd just like to request an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-24E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and or instructing negotiators.
So it's just item two on that?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion. Mayor Protem?
Move to go to executive session as requested.
And Ms. Duncan? Okay, we have a motion and second for going into exec session. Please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Our meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on May 25th, 2021.